All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, October 17, 2022, and ask if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Baldino. Trustee Canty.
Here.
Trustee Bertucci.
Here.
Trustee Labads.
Here.
Trustee Schwingbeck.
Here.
Trustee Grassi.
Here.
Trustee Tenalia.
Here.
Trustee Scaletta.
Here.
President Hayes.
Here. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Just one set to approve tonight. That's from our village board meeting of October 3, 2022. Are there any changes or passes?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by trustee Labad, second by trustee Schwingbeck. Any comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the approval of the accounts payable, and I call on trustee Bertucci.
I move approval of the warrant register for the check dated 10/15/2022 in the amount of $3,732,879.57.
Second. Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Scaletta. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci.
Yes.
Trustee Scaletta.
Yes.
Trustee Labads.
Yes.
Trustee Grassi.
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia.
Yes.
Trustee Canty.
Yes.
Trustee Baldino. Trustee Schwingbeck.
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Well, next, under recognitions and presentations, we have two very special recognitions and presentations here this evening, and thank you all for joining us to help honor and celebrate these very worthy organizations and individuals receiving these awards tonight and these recognitions. The first is a presentation of the 2022 Disability Employment Award to Church Creek by the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities. Tonight, again, we join the Arlington Heights Commission for Citizens with Disabilities in celebrating National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Held annually in October, National Disability Employment Awareness Month is a time to celebrate the many contributions of America's workers with disabilities and the importance of policies to ensure that all Americans who want to work can work. The U.S. Department of Labor's Office of Disability Employment Policy is pleased to announce this year's theme as Disability: Part of the Equity Equation. This theme celebrates the contributions of America's workers with disabilities, past and present, and showcases supportive, inclusive employment policies and practices, and recognizes the important role people with disabilities play in a diverse and inclusive American workforce. The village's Commission for Citizens with Disabilities is charged with promoting issues and concerns of citizens with disabilities. This includes the promotion of employment opportunities for people with disabilities. Therefore, October's designation as Disability Employment Awareness Month provides the Commission the opportunity to honor and acknowledge Arlington Heights businesses known for employing individuals with disabilities. It is hoped that the presentation of this annual award will encourage other Arlington Heights employers to recruit and hire qualified workers with disabilities. This year, we recognize Church Creek for being part of the equity equation and for valuing employees who have disabilities. For the past four years, Church Creek has partnered with Little City to employ Little City residents at Church Creek. Church Creek has provided job coaching and support to individuals with disabilities and fully integrated these staff members into their team. In the words of nominator Dan Bruick, "Church Creek is in the business of caring for people, and it shows. People do matter." And 2022 marks the 14th year that the Commission has hosted the Disability Employment Awareness Award. Church Creek was the clear choice winner for this year's award, and as exemplified by their collaborative work with Little City in the field of supportive employment for persons with disabilities. Now, I'd like to invite Cheryl Letwad, Letwat, Commissioner of the Citizens with Disabilities, to say a few words regarding this year's award. Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Hayes, and the Board of Trustees for recognizing the importance of this award presentation this evening. In promoting the employment of people with disabilities, it is events like this that bring the issue to the forefront. Workers with disabilities are a valued resource to many employers. Church Creek works to support individuals with disabilities to ensure they experience workplace success, and we appreciate and value their contribution. Thank you.
Thanks. (applause) At this point, I would like to invite a representative from Little City to come up and accept the award on behalf of Church Creek, if they're here. Anybody from Little City, come on forward.
Church Creek is here also.
Oh, Church Creek, come on forward. We weren't sure you were going to be able to make it, so why don't you come forward and accept this award. On behalf of a grateful community, we very much appreciate all the great work that you've done for individuals with disabilities and especially for employing those at the Church Creek facility. So, congratulations again.
Thank you. We are truly humbled.
Would you like to say a few words? We do, if you could just pass me the microphone, if you would.
I did a couple sentences here.
Why don't you take that, if you would.
We are truly humbled by this acknowledgement. We strive to serve not only our residents and their families, but our team members as well. The dedication, care, and joy and service demonstrated by our team is at the heart of our success, and we couldn't do it without these people, and they're just wonderful. You know, I just left two of them to close up by themselves tonight, and they're great, great, great folks. Thank you.
Congratulations again.[425.12][425.12](applause) Can we take a picture? Why don't you guys, Little City, come on up. Little City, come on up. Come on. All right. Come over here.
All right, one, two, three.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
I would like to just recognize our commissioners on the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities as well. I know we've got a number of commissioners here this evening, are probably all sitting in the front row, so if you'd all please stand, if you could, as well, and just to be recognized. Thank you for all the great work that you do on behalf of our citizens with disabilities. Thanks.[474.41][474.41](applause) Well, now, we have another very special presentation to make this evening. That's a presentation of a commendation award by myself on behalf of this village board and all the residents that we represent to Officer Treston Shaney. On August 2, while participating in the annual National Night Out event at North School Park, Officer Treston Shaney observed a commotion in the crowd a short distance from where he was demonstrating the police department's forensic services capabilities. Officer Shaney moved quickly towards the incident and discovered seven-year-old Colin Connolly was choking and could not breathe. Officer Shaney, without hesitation, administered the Heimlich maneuver and was able to dislodge a piece of candy that was obstructing Colin's airway. This all occurred amidst a large crowd of concerned observers. This incident was captured on police body-worn camera, showing the quick reaction and decisive response by Officer Shaney. Colin and his parents have allowed us to share Colin's experience with all of you this evening. Please take a look at the body-worn camera video, and I just caution you, there is no audio associated with this video, but please take a look with us.
(mumbling)
Well, Colin Connolly himself and members of his family joined the village board tonight, including his mother Christine, his father Neil, his sister Claire, and a number of supporting family and friends. Colin's father Neil is an officer with the U.S. Customs and Border Protection and is joined by a number of agency officials. Now, I'd like to introduce U.S. Customs and Border Protection Acting Area Port Director, Kamisha Sherrill. And please, Kamisha, if you'd invite your team, the individuals you've got with you this evening as well.
So, as stated, I am Kamisha Sherrill, the Acting Area Port Director for U.S. Customs and Border Protection. I want to say, for me, the health, wellness, and safety of my staff is at the forefront of my mind. So, I am so grateful that you were there when my staff needed you the most. So, just so you know, for me, I am forever grateful. And I'm also grateful for your family, who I know that supports you along the way in all that you do. I also, really quick, want to be able to present to you a letter on behalf of U.S. Customs Border Protection Director LaFonda Sutton Burke. Dear Officer Shaney, I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank you and the wonderful team of fellow first responders for the quick and life-saving response you provided to CBP Officer Neil Connolly's son, Colin, when he began choking on a piece of candy at the North School Park while attending the Arlington Heights Police Department National Night Out event on August 2, 2022. It was only because of your actions and those of your fellow first responders that Colin survived and was able to go home with his family that night. We are blessed and grateful that such professional and dedicated first responders were on duty that evening. Your perseverance and commitment to duty were evident to the whole community. We share in the Connolly family's gratitude for your actions resulting in the positive outcome for this incident. If I can ever be assistance to you, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And also, I have a special presentation now.
Oh, wow.[781.12][781.12](laughing) Thanks, buddy. Appreciate it.[783.12][783.12](applause) Thank you.
And, Trustee, if you'd come forward, we'll make this official presentation of the commendation. This is an Arlington Heights Police Department commendation that is hereby awarded to Officer Treston Shaney, number 366. In recognition of your quick and decisive actions, you successfully treated a young choking victim and brought great credit to the department. Congratulations, Officer Shaney.[826.12][826.12](applause)
Not much for speeches, but first, I'd like to thank the village for your support. Mayor, thank you, as well as my coworkers, supervisors. Every day, we make each other better. We work as a team, and I thank you guys. I thank the family, Colin's family. Thanks for supporting us, coming out to National Night Out, and most of all, my family. Thanks for your support. Thank you.[884.93][884.93](applause)
Hold that, that's yours. Come on up here, Colin. There you go.[890.31][890.31](laughing) All right.[892.31][892.31](applause) Well, thank you all for joining us for these very special presentations tonight, especially thanks to all of our uniformed personnel here this evening. Colin is being, or Treston is being recognized here this evening, but I know that all of you, all of the men and women of our police department, do equally great things on a daily basis to keep us safe, and so we thank you, we can't thank you enough for all that you do for the Village of Arlington Heights. Thanks for being here tonight.[955.23][955.23](applause) I'm going to allow you to exit at this time. We'll take just a minute. All right, we will then move on in the agenda to citizens to be heard, and we do have some blue cards tonight for individuals who'd like to adjust the board on items not on the agenda. And so, we will proceed with those. You were reminded of the three-minute time limit. The first is Peg Lane. Welcome, Peg.
Thank you, thank you. Whoops, which, is this the mic? Hello?
Yeah, you're good.
Hello? I felt like I just had more questions than anything about the effect on our neighborhoods. I live three blocks from where the proposed stadium will be, and I'm wondering if they'll be using our condo parking lot for games. I think there are 13 games throughout the season. Is that right?
Well, there's eight regular season home games. And then, you know, some exhibition games. But we are, we are very premature talking about things like that, Peg, as we've said throughout the process. You know, we don't have a, we've got a preliminary plan. We don't have a lot of detailed plans at this point, and so a lot of these questions will be answered down the road, maybe next year, maybe longer than that. But your questions will certainly be answered. I know there'll be a lot of, there'll be designated parking spaces, but there'll also be a lot of entrepreneurs, perhaps in the neighborhood that might, perhaps you're the owner of your condo building that might want to get involved in something like that. But I think it's really premature to really discuss that at this point.
Is there a timeline for the decision date?
Well, the first phase is for the contract purchaser, the Chicago Bears, to close on the property.
Okay.
And we're anticipating that they would do that either the end of this year or early next year. Then we move on to phase two, which is the submittal of formal plans.
Okay.
And so, we got a long way to go.
Thank you.
But thanks for your question. And next is Roberta Fisher.
Yes, hello there. Mine is similar to Peggy about the stadium, because I was, I have questions too about if they vote on it to come here, I mean, what else can residents do? I mean, where our taxpayer money is involved and, you know, our neighborhoods. I just wondered how they can involve us once they say, okay, we're going to come here. I mean, don't we have any say before that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And we've been saying this all along, is that the public, you and other members of the public will be, have a full and fair opportunity to provide input before any votes are taken. So, we're not at that point yet. You know, all we're doing right now is trying to assist the Bears in closing on the contract and purchase agreement. And so, that's all we're doing right now. They don't own the property yet, and at some point in the future, we'll be making other decisions. But the public will have many, many opportunities to weigh in before we make any votes on this.
Okay, well, once they decide that they want the property, isn't that pretty much as far as?
No, the village has quite a bit of say in terms of what will go there ultimately, and how it will be built, and how it will impact our community, and so we've got a long way to go.
Well, is there any possibility that it could be rejected?
It's certainly possible.
Oh, okay, well, if it's going to be signed like the seventh, I mean, it seems like that's pretty...
On the seventh, all we're doing, we're going to be talking about that in just a few minutes, is a development agreement that assists us in getting the Bears to closing on their deal. And so, Mr. Recklaus, further comments?
Yeah, all that's being looked at on November 7 is we're calling it a pre-development agreement, and it's just a roadmap. Neither, it's basically a statement of intentions of if they buy the property and if they develop it, how we will talk about it. But I think it's really important to note that even if the Bears buy the property, the village can still say no to any development. We, the zoning on that property is such that the village has a lot of say-so on what can or can't be built, and absolutely, to answer your question directly, the village could say no to what they propose. It could say no, you know, with certain conditions, and all of the decisions that the village makes have to take place in an open meeting such as this, where members of the public have input. We want to get input from everybody, as the mayor said, and so we're a long ways off. But please understand that the village has to say yes before any, you know, any project can be built there.
Okay, I just wanted a question answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to address the board on items not on the agenda?
Melissa Kerr speaking, abolish tax increment finance districts.
Thanks, Melissa. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I will close the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the agenda. We do have one item under old business, and that's a report out of the recommended motion, recommendation made by the Committee of the Whole Meeting at our meeting last Monday, October 10, 2022, that does deal, as the village manager just indicated, with a pre-development agreement or roadmap with the Chicago Bears. We are not taking any action. This is not an action item tonight. This will be discussed and voted upon at our meeting on Monday night, November 7. And so, all we're doing tonight is reporting out the motion that was made at our Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, October 10, 2022. And with that, I would call on trustee Canty.
Yes, because you amended the motion.
It should really be the main motion, I think, rather than the amendment. So, who made the main motion? Trustee Scaletta?
No, it was actually trustee, uh...
Trustee Grassi.
So, you want me to make the original or the amended?
The main motion with, as amended.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me.
Can I give it a shot?
Well, let's...
Okay.
So, I have the one that, before it was, we amended it, so let me see what.
Well, then, Mr. Recklaus or Mr. Passman?
The motion was simply to recommend...
I'm sorry, the motion was just to recommend that the village board of trustees approve the pre-development agreement at the November 7 board meeting. And so, it's just a report out, you know, as we do with all old business items that come out of a committee of the whole meeting. And so, the, we have in the minutes that trustee Canty moved, seconded by trustee Scaletta, to amend the motion that the committee of the whole recommend that the village board of trustees approve the pre-development agreement with the Chicago Bears Football Club, LLC, at the November 7, 2022 village board meeting.
But the motion, that was the amendment of a main motion, so the main motion is the one we're considering tonight, as amended.
Yeah, but, Mayor, if I may, there is no action item tonight to do, because I don't know that a motion would be in order tonight, because there's no, as you stated, there's no action to be taken by this, by this board.
We did, we do, as, you know, typically, for old business items, we do report these out and do them this way.
Right, when is the final, when is the final time that the board is seeing the item?
Okay.
So, let, in fact, let's do this.
Yeah.
We're just reporting out the fact that a motion was made to recommend approval of the pre-development agreement at our meeting on Monday, November 7.
Sure.
Everybody clear?
That's all, right, this is not something that's required by law, it's something we've just done in practice. The actual ordinance is what carries the weight, and that will appear on the November 7 agenda for consideration.
Right. Okay, there is then no other old business unless there's any discussion on that item. We do have one, any discussion from the board? We do have one blue card on that, Mr. Costin. And again, you're reminded of the three-minute time limit as well.
Thank you. So, just very briefly, in regards to Section 9, I'm not going to go into a lot of it, but we oppose a lot of the various different taxpayer incentives for this project. A lot of the rest of the agreement, we don't have any problem with. But what I wanted to talk about, what wasn't talked about at the last meeting, and really hasn't been talked about, the Bears at all, is schools. In the map that they presented at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, there was no image that included a school. There was some reference to civic buildings, but they didn't look like schools, because they didn't have any parks immediately around it, which most schools have. So, there's a real big concern, because there's, as a number of the trustees have pointed out, there's a lot of density in the housing in regards to this proposed development. And I tried to read off the map, it's probably not exact, but it looked like there was 18 to 20 stacked flat buildings, including renderings of buildings that were possibly 10 to 12 stories tall, 25 to 30 buildings with tuck-under condos, stories, I'm not really sure, but three to five stories, and possibly 50 to 100 townhomes, maybe more. And the question is, with all of this residential impact that would be happening from this development, and no discussion in regards to schools as to where the children from this development is going to go, I think that that's really concerning, that the Bears aren't mentioning any of that. It doesn't appear that any of the land is being used for that. So, how many units and what type of mix is being proposed roughly? I know that we won't have exact numbers, but roughly, based on their renderings, how many units is that? And also, with some of the things in this agreement, is, like, talk about a TIF district, and so I'm concerned on how that might impact the schools. If it's a $5 billion development, like the Bears say, and the increment starts at 200 million, which is roughly the property value, proposed purchase agreement, that means that $4.8 billion would be in that increment. And so, that means that 96% of the potential property tax revenue of this area could go into the TIF districts. So, I wonder if you guys have heard from any of the school districts about concerns about a potential TIF district and TIF district financing, and in regards to the residential portion of this, do any of the school districts have concerns about that as well? Because that equalized assessed value would be locked up in a TIF district for 23 years. So, I'll have other comments at the next meeting about the tax increment stuff, and, but if you can kind of respond or talk about what's going to be the process with the Bears in relation to the impact on the schools. Thank you.
Well, again, I think it's premature to talk about that without any final plans, but I'll call on our village manager, Mr. Recklaus.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an extremely preliminary, preliminary plan. The village is not approving this plan. The village has not been able to, in any detail, review this plan. We don't have sufficient information to review the plan. The village, as part of the agreement, is not suggesting or approving tax increment financing or any other type of incentive as part of this agreement. All it does is indicates the types of incentives that might be pursued and the conditions under which the village would discuss such things, not making any commitments whatsoever. The school districts have been... Um, the, uh, school districts have been part of stakeholder meetings, and they are, well, certainly, all of the, the, any rules that would, that, um, under state law, in terms of what types of, uh, um, you know, how many children might be generated, all of that will be still, still have to be reviewed the same way we review any project. School districts will be involved in that process, um, just as they always are for any development in our community. And so, um, the process would be exactly the same as it would be for any other development. It's just, as the mayor indicated, very preliminary, and this pre-development agreement does not, um, provide a, a formal approval of the preliminary concept. It, it may not be even the concept that is formally proposed by Chicago Bears when we're all said and done. We don't know, because we're just in the very early stages of the discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Recklaus. Any other comments on this agenda item from the audience? Seeing none, anything further from the board? Seeing none, there is no other old business, so I move on to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Any members of the audience wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Any members of the board wish to vote no or pass on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Motion by Trustee Lebed, seconded by Trustee Schwingback. Roll call?
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Scaletta?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Canty?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We move on to new business, there is none, and so we'll move to the, the approval, I'm sorry, we've got approval of bids. So we're going back to approval of bids. We do have one item, the EV charging infrastructure request for proposals, award of a consultant, purchase of charging units. Mr. Recklaus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the village board's 2022 to 23 strategic priorities include implementation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure in the Vale parking garage. This was something that was discussed earlier this year in a committee of the whole meeting, and, uh, this project was to be funded through the green aggregation revenue that we got through the, uh, that we have set aside for green projects. We did, staff did seek out different proposals from vendors that do this type of work, and, and we have narrowed it down and have a concept that we believe is worth pursuing. Uh, I'm going to turn things over into, to our planning and community development director, Charles Perkins, who's going to walk us through the concept.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Normally, we don't do a full PowerPoint presentation for a bid, but as this is a new venture for the village and one of the board's strategic priorities, as the village manager mentioned, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of walk through this, show some examples, and, um, talk about how this will work a little bit. I do want to thank Jake Schmidt from my department, who's worked on this, as well as the Public Works team that's been involved in this. So what's before you is a request for consideration of approval of two parts. One, a consultant selection for the EV stations and installing the infrastructure. And then the second part is to go through our joint purchase, uh, uh, contract that, you know, us and other communities have to acquire the actual charging units. We can purchase those charging units, uh, quite a bit cheaper by splitting that and going through that, those two steps. Um, so the infrastructure that's needed, uh, we need to, uh, bring electric to the Vale garage or extend electric, uh, service to the garage, and then install, uh, two, level-two dual charging stations. So that would provide for four ports, uh, for four charging areas on the second floor in the permit parking. That was the, the preferred priority that the board, um, had when we talked about this at the committee of the whole. Uh, we also, as an alternate, asked for pricing to install on the first level, which would be for customer higher turnover spaces, uh, the same, uh, proposal for two, uh, level-two dual charging stations. And I'll talk about the level-two, uh, charging station, station a little bit, and that will be in the kind of the well area of the garage, and then upgrades to the electrical room and extension of, uh, electric service to these locations. When we talked about this in March, uh, there was discussion on, you know, what are some of the trends, what kind of vehicle, EV registrations do we have in Arlington Heights? Um, so earlier this year, we obtained this information, there are 375 EV vehicles, I think that was, uh, late spring when we got that information, uh, in our two ZIP codes, and that had increased 16 and a half percent from that same time period in 2021. And then EV sales this, the quarter of this year were 75% up nationwide, uh, over the prior year. Um, there's various estimates on how many millions of EV vehicles will be in the system, you know, in the next, you know, five to 10 years. Some states are prohibiting the sale of gas-powered vehicles, uh, during certain time periods in, in 2035. Um, so it's a trend that's on its way, and, and we don't have any electric vehicle charging stations in our parking system. Uh, the company we're recommending, we, we did go out with an RFP, we had three proposals. Uh, we, we are recommend, recommending SemiConnect. Um, they're the second-largest supplier of level-two EV charging stations in the nation. They have 19,000, uh, stations. Uh, references were checked, uh, one public installation and two private installations, uh, all came back very positive. There was one that had a malfunction in their system, and a new system was quickly, uh, sent out by, by the company. This is a floor plan on the second floor, uh, the area in orange on, on the bottom right, that's the southeast corner of the Vale garage, so we would need to bring, uh, electricity up into the building, into the electrical room, a new panel, and out to those spaces. And on the first floor, to provide the four units highlighted in blue, would have to do the same thing, extending, uh, electrical infrastructure. So this is an example, representative example of, uh, a, a level-two charging station. So there's, um, three or four types of charging stations. Well, you know, one is 120-volt station, it basically plug-in your outlet, that charges at about three miles an hour, um, so it'd take a long time to charge a vehicle. A level-two, depending on your vehicle, uh, charges in the range of 25 to 30 miles an hour. And then a, um, a level-three charger, that's about a 480-volt, uh, charger, um, they charge, could charge anywhere up to 300, uh, miles per hour. And then you have the Tesla Superchargers, they do like 1,000 miles per hour, um, so they're super fast. So the level-two are the most common in, in garages and infrastructure that we have. Um, the provider is proposing using an app called PlugShare app. There are other apps out there like ChargePoint. If you go on the PlugShare app, uh, you can see all the charging stations in the region, even if they're not, um, you know, by that particular company, they, you can still use that app. You can also pay by phone if you want to. You can pay by a credit card at the station itself, so you don't have to have an app, but you can do that. Um, this is just some screenshots, uh, we took this afternoon of the PlugShare app. So on the right-hand side, that vertical column, the little blue in the middle is, is this building, and the green icons around are the charging stations in our, in our area. So, um, this, you know, at that time, it's showing 12 stations available. Um, drilling down, if you, I looked at the Cook County, they have a couple of charging stations out at the courthouse, um, so it tells you there were two available. It also, uh, if you scroll down further, it tells you what their pricing is. Some are free, uh, for a certain time period, some charged by kilowatt-hour, some charged by the hour. It's, it's quite a mix. Um, so, you know, how can we set rates? Uh, first thing is, you know, once we get these, or as we're getting close to getting them installed, we'll work with, uh, the vendor, and they'll provide us assistance on, on what's the right rate to charge. Uh, we probably won't recoup our costs on this, um, especially with the cost of extending, uh, you know, the electrical, electrical service to the garage. Um, and some of the units, uh, in the area are free or very low cost, so if obviously we have, you know, above-market costs, people won't use those stations. So, um, you can charge, um, and probably as things go, uh, and there's more EV vehicles in the marketplace, then the, well, most of the EV chargers will, will be charging. So you can charge on a kilowatt-hour or on duration. So for example, all of the high school districts, uh, all the high schools, they have charging stations. They usually are charging, what I've seen is about 50 cents for an hour, um, for, and then they have a maximum hours that you can stay there. Um, we can adjust the rates by time of day. Um, we can adjust the rates to cover the electric service and the service costs, so the costs of, um, you know, uh, executing, uh, the, uh, char, you know, credit card charges and things of that nature. Uh, we can also, and most, uh, places do, they, if you stay there too long, uh, you get a notice on your app, and you get an increased, uh, uh, fee. So if somebody's trying to use that space to park illegally all day, we can automatically give them a notice, and then they would get their parking fee without the police department having to go out and issue a ticket. Um, so there's a lot of things that we could do with that system, that we'll probably have to try different variations, um, and adjust as we go. Anyone who's parking in that spot that's not an EV, uh, would have to obviously have appropriate signage, and then that would be a regular enforcement, uh, by our public service officers. They, uh, we do have, we will have access to, you know, on, uh, dashboard tracking and, and, you know, providing data and reports and things on the usage of the, uh, EVs. And then SemiConnect does charge a 5% fee for processing the transactions and payments if we're at a payment, uh, type of system. They also provide 24/7 support, uh, they provide ongoing monitoring, and they do, uh, periodic, uh, remote, uh, checks on the system, and they can also, um, add, you know, software packages and upgrades to, to the software. So the, what are the costs? So, uh, SemiConnect bid, um, for the infrastructure would cost almost $15,000 to provide the electrical service to the second floor, and then, uh, just over $5,000 to provide the electrical service to the first floor. Uh, there are some, uh, ongoing fees, there's, um, a yearly network fee of about $1,900 for those, uh, eight charge ports or the four stations. Uh, there's also an extended warranty that we would recommend after the first year that we take that on, so that, uh, the, the, uh, equipment can be replaced. And then the second part of the recommendation is to acquire the actual units through, uh, a joint purchase source well, and we can get those units for just under $18,000, and that saves almost $4,000 from, uh, the base bid in the RFP. Um, so the total one-year cost is about $37,845, and there's the range of ongoing costs, um, described at the bottom. If the board wanted to break it out and just do only the second floor, uh, the second floor cost would be around $24,000, uh, with the electrical and, and the charging stations, and then there'll be the ongoing, uh, cost of about $1,800. And then for the first floor would be just over $14,000 if elected to do that, and then ongoing annual costs of about, uh, $1,760. Uh, we're recommending, it's taken us a while to get here and vet all this out, and the prices have already gone up. They went up on October 1st. Uh, the vendor is holding those prices pending a decision tonight. Um, so we're recommending moving forward with, uh, both phases of the electrical and acquiring, uh, all of the charging stations and doing all the, all of the installation at once. So we would have those four stations, eight charging ports, first level for, uh, customer parking, and, uh, the upper level for the permit parking, whether they be residents or businesses downtown. They could still park in the first level, as long as they abide by those, uh, hourly restrictions. I would imagine initially, we may not have a lot of, you know, usage certainly on the second floor, because, um, we're not sure many people who live downtown that park in the garage have EVs, but this would give them the opportunity to acquire EVs, and others could use that system on a limited basis as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I know this is a lot of information, um, but, um, available for any questions now. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Questions for the board? Trustee Scaletta?
Thank you, Mayor. So Charles, thank you for the, the memo you sent last week. Um, you, you laid everything out very nicely for us, um, but I still have about a dozen questions for you. So are there any brands that are currently on the market right now that would not be supported by these charging stations?
Uh, no, all, uh, all vehicles could plug in, uh, even a Tesla has an adapter that you can plug into this charging station.
Okay. And you, you talked about 25 to 30 miles an hour, you talked about 300 miles an hour, and you talked about 1,000 miles an hour. So how long is it going to take to charge a vehicle? And are we able to limit the amount of time a vehicle is in a space?
Yes, you could set up a limit, say, for example, on the first floor, you can only be there for two hours, um, and some charging stations do that. Um, you could allow on the permit level longer, but you'd probably want them to move eventually, so it doesn't become one person's designated parking space. Typically, you know, people, you know, they're not going to, certainly on the customer side, they're not going to charge fully their vehicle. Um, you know, they may plug it in for an hour or hour and a half, go to a restaurant, come back, you know, they've, you know, topped up their vehicle and off they go. If you're on a long road trip, that's when you use a supercharger, like Tesla has those superchargers, they, they charge at 1,000 miles an hour. You can charge, you know, your Tesla up to about 80% range in about 15 to 20 minutes on a supercharger. But if you're just plugging in, in a 120-volt outlet, it may take a couple of days to charge it fully, so you don't really do that. Most people, if they have a vehicle like that, they'll have a 240 volt in, you know, in a single-family home in their garage, and that's, you know, your stove, your oven, and your, you know, big appliances, like your furnaces, um, they all run off a 240 volt, so you just run a 240 volt to your garage, and that'll charge at about 30 miles per hour, so you can charge it overnight, you can program your car to charge at 1:00 in the morning. If you're on a commed hourly rate, and it'll charge up at the lowest rate, and in the morning, you're ready to go, and you've, you, you just top it up each day.
Okay. And so obviously, in, in the, on the first floor, we would limit it to two hours, I would imagine, right?
We, you know, we, you know, I think we'd, you know, experiment and see what kind of usage we, we got. We can change it at any time, um, but we don't want to be chopping and changing too much, so there is a three-hour limit in, in the, um, customer parking there, so we may start, start at three hours, um, and then if, um, it gets to the point where, you know, we need to turn it over quicker because there's more demand, then we can adjust. You know, the, a lot of these apps, you can also, if the stations are full, you can get in a queue, and it will send you a notice when the, when the station is available, and then you're next in line. So if we ever got to that point, then we would drop it down probably to two hours, for example, but I think we'd start at three, that's the, you know, regular customer parking hour that we have.
Okay. And can anyone use, if we were to put them on the second floor, can anyone use that, that space, or do they have to be a permit holder?
We could, uh, again, we could decide how we want to handle that. Um, so, uh, right now, we've been trying to find out if any, uh, any residents who live downtown own EV, own an EV, we, we don't have that data yet, but if there was a strong demand initially, then we could restrict it to only, uh, those that have permit, you know, parking. And again, that would be an enforcement issue, um, because, and, and probably done through the police department. Um, if there was limited demand, we could make it available for anybody to charge there for two or three hours, for example.
If I could, Trustee Scaletta, you know, I think what we're attempting to do is, when the board gave us direction at the COW meeting, uh, when we last discussed this, there was a desire to provide it for residents. And so I think our intent initially is for those second-floor chargers to be geared towards residents, but as Charles said, we could be flexible. I think the initial intent is to see if there's demand from the, the downtown residents.
So how many residents do live in the downtown?
Uh, I mean, we have over 2,000 units in, uh, the mid-rises downtown, um, so that's probably three, three and a half thousand residents just in the immediate downtown.
Okay. And, and there's only 375 vehicles in the village?
There's three, 375 registered EVs, you know, there could be some that aren't registered, but I would imagine if you got an EV, you're probably going to pay for your vehicle sticker, I would hope.
The, the other thing is sometimes there are folks that may have fleet cars that belong to their employer or something like that as well. Uh, but, but yeah, generally, I mean, we think it's not going to be dramatically different from that, and it, it's a little bit of a chicken-and-the-egg thing. I think part of the discussion was, um, folks who currently live in a unit that, where they get their parking in a downtown, one of our parking decks, they don't have an opportunity. And this would, and so perhaps they would have gotten an electric vehicle, but, um, you know, they want to have one that, where they live. And so this is the, the intent was to shake that out a little bit.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, going overkill, that we're providing too many locations, um, you know, and does it make more sense to have one in the Vale garage and maybe one in, one of the surface lots where commuters are that could be used by residents as well? Um, because I think when we talk residents, we're talking all residents, not just the downtown. Because I think when we talk residents, we're talking all residents, not just the downtown.
I think the intent was to, for, because what we're seeing is there are charging stations in apartment buildings that have private parking. We're seeing that phenomenon play out within our system and it is a gap for folks that live in a downtown unit where they're using our system. And so there is also economies of scale, and I want to speak for Charles, where if you put them in the same, it is cheaper for us to build these in the same garage. Is that correct, Charles? Because their electrical be...
Yeah, I mean, we actually talked about that, Trustee Scaletta. I mean, the cost we're talking about to not do the charges on the first floor of the garage is like $9,000 because those are the stations that we wouldn't buy. We would recommend, no matter what, we do the electrical service for the second floor and the first floor so it's ready. So we felt, yeah, it may be all in one location where it might be better spread out, but it would probably cost us a lot more to get electric in the surface parking lots. And then you've got to have different charging stations that are, you know, out in the weather more and things like that. So we felt this was the most cost-effective approach to get eight charging stations, really get on the map. And if you look back at the PlugShare map, this on the right-hand side, there's really not many. The closest charging station to us is a comm ed station and I'm not sure the public can use that. So there's actually nothing in the middle of Arlington Heights. There's no charging stations in the middle of Arlington Heights. They're at the schools or at the courthouse. There's two up at Town and Country in front of the Amazon store. Those are new, but that's the closest. There's nothing right there in the center of Arlington Heights. So we thought getting the eight done, it's taken us a while to get here. We can figure it all out and we'd have one set for customers, one set for the residents, and we can see how that works and then build on it from there.
Okay. And I'm not opposed to it. I want to make sure that we're working all this out and it sounds like you're still working it out. You know, and I think that whatever the max is on the first floor should be the max on the second floor as well. You know, that we need to be consistent with whatever our practice is because it'll be easier if we find that there's such a demand on the first floor that we can always move people up to the second floor.
True. I mean, having eight in the same garage makes it easier to move, allow people to move around. To add any more beyond the eight that we're talking, we'd need more electrical service. So...
I'm good with eight. I'm just... So what's the estimated lifespan of this equipment?
That's a good question. Jake, do you know, Jake, are you here? Do you know that? If you can come to the podium, if you have any information on that.
There's no quoted lifespan for these units, but if we do pursue the warranty plan, they are replaceable. So if something goes wrong with the units, there's a manufacturing defect. It doesn't stand up in the weather. As long as it's protected by the warranty plan, we're recommending it would be replaced.
Okay. Well, that's nice. I'm concerned that, you know, we buy something and, you know, where are we at seven years from now? Are we buying new ones? Or are you saying that we would just keep paying for a $1,600 extended warranty until we need to replace it?
No, I'm sure there's a limit on the warranty, Trustee Scaletta. That would be unusual that you'd have a warranty that would go out forever and it would keep being replaced. Yeah, we haven't seen the warranty. We can certainly take a look at that and report back. You know, this kind of infrastructure, you do have to replace over time. It's so new, I don't know how long they last before you do have to replace them. But my guess is early on, the warranty will cover it and after a while, if there is a major issue, we would have to replace it. All the technology changes too.
Right. I was going to say, I mean, I think one of the things that we're trying to do here and one of the reasons we're using this green aggregation money is that we're recognizing that this is a pilot program of sorts. And from talking, we are not hearing that the folks that are using this infrastructure are having any kind of artificially short timeframe, but it's still new technology. And I think Charles' point is probably the most likely thing is that these things will evolve and there'll be better technology within a few years. But it is a new technology and it is something that there's not, you know, 25 years of experience for any type of EV charging equipment that's out there commercially. And so, you know, that's why we're using kind of non-traditional funds for this and it is somewhat of a pilot.
But there are first adopters that have had it out there for five years. I mean, I think it just makes sense that we reach out to someone to understand...
We can get more information, for sure.
I mean, I think that it just makes a lot of sense that we understand, you know, how much we're spending tonight over, you know, the estimated life of the equipment.
Sure.
I think that's how we ended up not having turbines in the downtown, Charles, right?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at that quite a few years, 10, 15 years ago and that technology's changed as well.
Absolutely. Do different vehicles charge faster or slower? Or is it the actual equipment that we're installing that determines that?
It's both. Some vehicles can charge at a supercharger rate and others can't. So I know a Tesla can charge at a supercharger rate and there's a system in the Tesla that gets the battery ready before it accepts a supercharge. And then other EVs, you know, they're not capable of charging at a supercharger rate. Most vehicles, you can charge at level one, two or three though, and level two are the most common.
Right, but we're not putting in a supercharger?
We're not, no.
Okay. So there's, so we're paying for the electricity and we're getting reimbursed less a 5% transaction fee?
That's correct. Again, that depends on the rates, you know, that everybody else around us is charging. It's possible we wouldn't get fully reimbursed for the electricity either.
Okay. There would be a choice we could make, though. We would be choosing the rate that we would be charging. There's a little bit of a market to it. And so if we were, let's say, we weren't making up the electric cost that we incurred, we could charge more, but then you run the risk of her charging more than other places, people not using our system.
So we could be losing money?
If the market, if everyone else was losing money, then we would be losing money. I mean, we're going to charge, our goal is to charge, to recoup our costs. But let's just say that, you know, like it's kind of like parking fees, that, you know, if you're the most expensive, less people would go there. But our goal is to recoup our costs.
When are we going to determine this?
When we establish this, I think we would set it up as part of, you know, what our actual electric costs are, but we'd probably do a little surveying to see what other areas are charging as well.
I mean, I think there's a likelihood we will recoup the energy cost. You know, I just can't promise that, you know, because it a lot depends on, you know, how many stations are in the area, what's the usage? You know, how quickly do residents adapt to EVs? You know, certainly the residents that live downtown. You know, so if you look at the ones at Town and Country, they're free for the first half an hour. And that's probably because, you know, they want customers to go there and shop in their store. So the ones on the first floor that are our customers, you know, hopefully they'll come downtown and charge their vehicle and spend money in the restaurants or the businesses downtown. The ones on the second floor is a benefit for our residents or our business owners that might be purchasing. They're paying a permit, you know, to park in that garage. And, you know, we could, there's so many different ways of setting the rates. It's hard to say until we really get into it how those energy costs have recovered.
Have we identified what the average rate is in the area versus what our electrical rate is?
No, but I can tell you it varies. So there are some that are 50 cents a kilowatt hour and then there are some that are 50 cents an hour. And it depends on what car you have and what kind of kilowatts they, you know, use in an hour. So I'm sorry, I don't have, you know, an answer, you know, specific because it just is across the board.
We think, though, that given the fact that there's a gap in the market, right in the middle, we think that we would be able to recoup our costs because it's especially for folks that live downtown or frequent downtown. As long as we're not exorbitant, we think that people will use it out of convenience.
If we don't make up the cost of the electricity that we're going to buy, that people are going to use in their vehicles, what fund is that coming out of?
Currently, this whole project is being funded out of the Green Aggregation Fund, which has about $500,000 in it, give or take a will by the end of the year. So, I mean, that would be a programmatic and budget decision that we would have to make as we go forward. But it's not like, this is not bleeding-edge technology anymore. And so these types of things are out there. They are making money. They are, you are getting, you know, funds back for your electrical costs. We're just, I just want to be careful in saying that depending on something crazy happens in the electrical market, we just can't guarantee that there may be some time when we're not getting reimbursed fully. It's a good question, but our intent is to get reimbursed for all of our electrical costs.
I just want to make sure that, you know, it sounds like that that fund is healthy and there's nothing else that fund is being used to or?
Not at this, well, we are, we're using it for the up charge for the electric vehicle. The difference between that and a regular vehicle. There may be other projects that come out of there going forward, but right now, the fund is in reasonably good shape.
My last comment is I think that, you know, if this does move forward, that you need to, you know, designate a certain balance of that fund for this, just in case. Because what you can't have is you can't have the village going to the general fund and, you know, residents paying for other people charging their vehicles. Right?
I mean, our intent is, you know, we'd set, you know, work with SEMA Connect, set a price that, you know, is reflective to, you know, cover the, you know, energy charge. But, you know, we have to look at how that then compares with others in the marketplace. If they're all doing that, then that's, it's going to be covered. If they're all undercutting the market, then we set too high and then nobody's going to use that space other than perhaps our residents that are on the second floor because it's most convenient for them.
But the recommendation is to do this now and figure that out later?
Yes, because that's the only way we're going to be able to report back and understand it all and then, you know, look at expanding it. And this is, this is a growing segment of the market. This is where, you know, vehicles are going in the future. And, you know, it's good for Arlington Heights to get ahead of the curve and, you know, have EV charges in our downtown and set that example. So I think we're going to be there. We just, you know, can't answer all the questions right now.
I think, I think it's fair to say that, again, as a pilot program, there is a certain amount of risk that comes with this. But we're limiting the risk to these small number of chargers at this one location at this time. But it's not like we're the first folks to do this either. And so we do fully expect that if you go 10, 15 years in the future, these are going to be much more ubiquitous out there within the community. But this is our first step along this way. And, you know, we're, you know, we're going to be tweaking this program as we go based on our experience, based on the market.
One of the things we liked about SEMA Connect was they consult with us and they would offer area-wide pricing. So at all times, we'd know what the area-wide pricing is to make sure we're in the market. Can't give you a price now, but we know we'll be competitive just because that's fair. Right now, we're probably around 7.5 cent per kilowatt for the energy. On top of that is the maintenance fee. I don't know that, but we're nowhere near the 50 cents or even 35 cents others are charging. It's just there was no guarantee. But right now, all the tax incentives have been for the appliance. It's been for the charging. No one's giving away right now that I'm aware of electricity for free. There is able to offset some of the equipment costs we as a government body cannot. We don't get tax incentives. But that's what the Green Initiative fee is for. That covers the base. I don't have any concern that we're not going to be able to cover the electricity costs.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got caught up with staff in a backseat.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm just, I'm happy to hear that answer because otherwise, you guys have lost me. I mean, you know, this just seemed way too much of a speculation. You know, I like being the leader, but I don't want to be the leader, you know, into the deep end of the pool. And so, thank you for...
We just didn't have the opportunity to monitor the costs from all that and that's what the consultants for. SEMA Connect will have that information for us.
And is the consulting consulting to everybody around us?
No, the SEMA Connect will just be consulting for their appliances or for their charging stations, but that's one of their services they offer, free for the life of the equipment.
But are there other people around us that are using SEMA?
There may be. There's so many different providers. So there's ChargePoint, there's a lot of ChargePoints around. There's a charging station called Volta that's around in the area. So I'm not aware of SEMA Connect close by, but, you know, they are in Illinois, they have a lot in Illinois.
Okay, well, as long as they don't have Monopoly in our area and they're basically setting the price, you know, for what people are ultimately going to pay.
They don't actually, they don't actually do any charging. They're just selling the equipment.
Right, but they're consulting. So if they were consulting to, if they were, if they were consulting to all the municipalities around us, that would make me nervous. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, other questions from the board? Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First, Randy, I appreciated you said twice the word that I was looking for and that's a pilot program because that tells us that we understand that there's got to be some flexibility, that there will be adjustments, so on and so forth. So I think that's important. My other, I have two other questions. One question, and as long as Chris came back up, he might be able to answer this, but as far as the equipment, at what point in time do we put something on the engineering assessment that, you know, says in year five, we're going to have this expense probably? Is this something that may eventually go on that assessment?
I would believe it would go into the assessment probably under the capital account for municipal, for the aggregation, for the green program.
Yeah.
All equipment that we have has a lifespan and we put it on its recycle.
Okay.
When it comes up on its cycling.
If I remember correctly, you're the keeper of the spreadsheet?
I am.
Okay, all right, all right. That's fair enough. I'm glad to hear that. My last question is to the full staff and that is, I'm wondering if we need to contact our insurer about letting them know that we have these things. It seems to me, it won't be a large additional risk, but it seems like there might be some additional liability for having one of those stations in the garage. And I think we would want to make sure that our policy is properly covering us from both, not only damage, but also from liability to someone who might not use it correctly and be injured. So I would suggest that we talk to our insurer.
Yeah, we absolutely can. One of the concerns and comments we had...
Chris, you're going to have to talk in the mic.
I'm so sorry. One of the concerns we had was safety, rain, et cetera.
Sure.
And as Charles had said, the charging doesn't occur until there's a communication. So electric car says, "I'm ready to charge." The charger says, "I'm ready to give you power." That's when power comes on. You can cut the cord, you're not going to get any electricity. You can do it in rain, you're not going to get an electric shock. There has to be full communication between the two. That's why we wanted to go with the consultant that can give us guidance if there's any type of software problems.
Right.
But I think it's a good idea and we will confirm with our...
Yeah, because I mean, I'm not so concerned about, you know, certainly this young gentleman here standing is going to know how to do it, but I'm concerned about me and my brethren who are 10, 20, 30 years older and they're trying to determine, it's, what? Wait a minute, you know, and may do something and, you know. So my gray hair is teaching me that. I sometimes need my children and grandchildren to help me do things that I never realized I'd have to.
Trustee Bertucci, it's a good question. And I have an EV. It's actually very easy to charge the car. I was surprised.
Even I can do it, Charles?
No, I mean, even I can do it, is what I'm saying.
All right, fair enough, fair enough. I would still like us to talk to our insurer, though, to make sure that there's not additional liability that we should be concerned about. So, thank you.
Other trustees ring back?
Thank you, Mayor. Charles, Randy, just one question and I've got to just bring up a few points that were made earlier, just so I understand it. So I think I know the answer, but maybe just explain, certainly for people that are listening at home, too. Explain the almost triple cost for putting all the upgrades on the second floor versus the first floor.
If I may, right now, we have an electric room on the first floor. We do not have an electric room on the second floor. So it includes another electric panel plus conduit plus wire because these are all 200 amp per charging area. Wire's much thicker and per foot cost increase. That's strictly the reason. Our source point is the first floor. It's cheap to put the first floor in. As you go up, core the floor and then have to add another panel and expend another charging station. and expend to another charging station, it gets more expensive.
Okay.
But we wanted to do it for, just so we had some future opportunities. We thought expandability was important.
No, I appreciate that, because I don't think a lot of people understand that. The other thing that, that I guess goes through my head, and Charles, you said you have an electric vehicle. I don't. I, I, I do know that people that are taking trips, I believe the car not only tells you that obviously you're gonna need a charge, but it tells you exactly where to go get the charge. And, and a lot of folks, friends of mine that have electric vehicles that are traveling long distances, a lot of those charging stations are the superchargers, where they can pull in. It's like a gas station. They charge their vehicle up, they can be on their way, and they can travel cross-country. When I, and I know we talked about this at the committee of the whole meeting, but I guess when I look at our downtown area, I'm assuming that people that own electric cars either have a charging system in their garage where they're just plugging into a 110 outlet and charging it all night long, or I have some friends that have a supercharging station in their garage. So I, I'm just struggling here, because putting them on the first floor, any resident in our village can come in and use it. And when you were answering some of trustee Scaletta's questions, we, you even implied that perhaps when we start out, that residents can go up and use the stations on the second floor. Whether it's residents just around our town or in the downtown area, or people that are up there on, you know, with permits, that live in some of the neighboring buildings, we're only gonna allow them to sit in that charging area for two to three hours. So we're, we're only looking at maybe being able to charge 60 to 90 miles. And I guess, you know, I, I go around to a lot of businesses that have these charging stations, and they're sitting empty a lot, because people are, are either charging in their garage before they come out. So I'm thinking that a lot of the usage of these charging stations, particularly on the first floor, are gonna be people with electric vehicles that are coming in, they can't find a place to park in the normal parking spot. So they're gonna pull into the electric spot for a couple hours, so that they don't have to go search for another, another spot. But I can't see them charging for enough time to really be paying off. They'll go home and plug into their own charging station. So I guess that's my only thought, is we might see these spots sitting, and I think it's a wonderful thing. I'm, I'm all in favor of electric vehicles. I think it's good for Arlington and good for our country, but just not sure we're gonna see the average resident plugging in where they're only gonna pick up 20 miles.
And I think, you know, and trustee Schwingback, you might be right. And, you know, this was, this was an item that was the board indicated that you all wanted to develop a plan to experiment with.
Right.
And, but certainly, as we've said, we don't claim to have all the answers. This is something that different localities are dealing with in different ways. It is very much, while it's not bleeding-edge, we're certainly not the first people to do this, there is not a standard agreed-upon business model here yet that is just out there for everywhere. And so we're, this is going to be our test bed, where we can experiment with, you know, whether it's a three hours or is it five hours? You know, we don't know. We'll see where that sweet spot is. And I think we're all gonna have to be looking at the data and have to be open-minded in terms of what we find. But we did wanna have at least an option for folks that live, you know, there, the second floor is kind of where they park, but also be able to experiment a little bit and see what, what the interest is for people who may be just visiting. And so we can go a little bit both ways, but yeah, I think we, there's not gonna be any disagreement for us on, on your points that, you know, we don't fully know.
Yeah, and when we talked about it at the committee of the whole meeting, the concept's wonderful. But as, I think as trustee Scaletta said, if we're losing money on this, and overall, our residents at some point in time are gonna have to start, you know, picking up the, the cost of that, that I, that I just am not too sure about.
Sure.
So, thank you.
All right, other questions? Trustee Labads?
Thank you, Mary Hayes. And I want to thank my colleagues for all the questions they've already asked, because they've, you've answered many of my questions already. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I know nothing about electric vehicles. I have none. I don't have one. And so one of my questions is, does the electricity cut off after a time? If somebody has it, I see manager Reckles nodding his head. Because my only thing analogy is, you know, you stick the nozzle from the gas pump into your car, and there is a cutoff there. So the same thing works with the battery in an electric vehicle?
Yes, it can work a couple of ways. One, if it gets to the maximum capacity, it will stop. Two, depending upon, you know, how we program the software, you can, you know, cap a charge at two hours and it will stop. And if they don't unplug, they're gonna notice, the driver, and if they don't unplug after that time period, you can, you know, charge them an extra fee for taking up that space.
Okay. Okay. And I can see also, in a way, that sort of speaks to trustee Bertucci's concerns about liability and so on, because with electricity, there's always, could be a fire risk at, at some point. So that sort of technology, I guess, actually prevents that from happening, or at least goes a long way to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, any garage has a risk, both electricity with the charging vehicles and, you know, with the gasoline vehicles, you've got a different risk.
Yeah. So I just also want to make sure I understand that we can get people to move along, that, that they won't be in those spaces for, you know, a whole day, that sort of thing. Because ideally, you know, as, as the changes occur and more and more people have their, have electric, electric vehicles, there'll be more desire, I think, for it. And so, so you explained that then they would get notified, they would get charged, and if they park, if somebody parks in one, in a space and they're not an electric vehicle, then they will get ticketed, just like any other parking enforcement issues. So I just want to make sure I fully understood that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. Because that's, that's important to me. I really appreciate that we're doing this now. I think, you know, it is a priority of the board, and I think it's really about time that we did it. And if I understood correctly, they, they were sort of holding a price for us?
The pricing went up October 1st, so after we interviewed the, the firm, and they said they would hold the price.
So I'm glad that we're being able to take advantage of, of that, too. So thank you very much.
Trustee Grassi?
Thank you. First, I, I just wanted to thank you, thank you, trustee Labads, for bringing up the contract and what we could save. I really want to thank the staff for all the research and work you do in the purchase contracts you bring to us, and the different available extensions we can get to really save money for our village. Time and time again, I, I'm just so impressed with the work that you do that can really help save us money as, as a village. I really would like to mention just how excited I am about this pilot program, and that's what it is. We have to figure this out together. But it's not about if, but when we move to more non-fossil fueled vehicles. So I think, even though we might not be clear on how all of this is gonna work, we're gonna have the need for more and more charging stations in our village, throughout the village. So I'm grateful that we are taking this pilot program to see what we can do and tweak it as we need to. And I just wanted to comment, all of this conversation has reminded me of a conversation I just had at work this week, and I have to bring this up, because when I first started at work, we were given these bag phones that looked like a small suitcase, and we thought they were the greatest thing in the world. But we were so concerned about, what about our calling cards that we use at payphones? How are we gonna make calls if this doesn't work? And look what we have now. So I, I'm just thinking about this, all these unknowns and the ways we're not gonna quite, be quite sure how this is gonna work and look for our village. Three, four years from now, we're gonna have a whole, completely different understanding. So I'm just really excited that we're, we're taking this pilot program forward, and thank you for the work you've done to bring this to us.
Anything further from the board? Trustee Scaletta?
So what is the timeline on this?
Jake, do you have information after you've talked to them on?
Jake, you did all the work. Tell us.
So it's anticipated that by February, the units would be installed and we could start operating them at that point. It's typically about a four-month duration. It does depend on how quickly they're able to get the units to us. There is a time gap, depending on how quickly things can actually get manufactured and shipped. And then, as long as the installer is able to meet the timeline, February is what we're aiming for.
So is SEMA Connect doing the upgrades with the electrical? Or is that, are we having?
SEMA Connect has a subcontractor.
Subcontractor, okay. We'll get all the COIs on that, right? Okay. I, I would move, the village board authorized the village manager to start a pilot program, an EV charging pilot program, and enter into an agreement with SEMA Connect for electrical upgrades and installation of EG charging units on the first and second floor of the Vale Garage, as well as to provide ongoing network and 24/7 support services. SEMA Connect fees would be approximately $20,000 plus ongoing network and support services and optional warranty fees. And be approved the purchase of four Level 2 dual-charging units from Source Well for the total price of $17,770. As further recommended, that the contract and unit purchase be funded from the green energy electric aggregation refunds.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Scaletta, and I heard trustee Canty. So trustee Canty is second. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Roll call.
Trustee Scaletta?
Yes.
Trustee Canty?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you for your work on this pilot program. We'll see where it goes. All right. Is there any other business under the report of the village manager?
Not this evening.
And how about from the board under petitions and communications? Seeing none, if then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
By trustee Tenalia, second by trustee Labads. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks for joining us this evening.